Oi, Mure, Jokanyanam. Good evening. We're coming to you live from Kisumu County, especially from the Mama Grace Onyango Cultural Centre. And this particular devolved in it that is known for its busy fishing industry that contributes immensely to the country's blue economy sector. We'll hold this Transgenerational Conversation, its third edition of its kind that seeks to hold, or rather, close the gap between the ages that are here in the country in order to have a sober discussion that will shape the country's future. Today's session is very vital because it sets the stage for the International Day of Peace that is set to be marked here in Kisumu County on the 21st of September with this year's theme being Act Now for a Peaceful World. Now, since morning, our audience have been streaming. They will have the chance to engage our panel of experts who are drawn from various fields. Remember that this session is exclusively live on KBC Channel One on all its platforms, courtesy of the National Cohesion and Integration Commission, NCIC, the United Nations Development Programme, UNDP, as well as the Korean International Cooperation Agency, including the county government of Kisumu and other stakeholders who are currently here with us. You'll be informed in just a few who they are. And of course, you watching us right now, you can have your say on our social media platforms at KBC Channel One. Remember the hashtag is AmaniKwaGround and we'll sample some of the views as this session continues. I am your moderator this evening. My name is Abdi Aziz Hashim. However, I am not alone.
Lakini kwa sasa hivi na urejeshu usukani kwa ke Abdi Aziz Hashim, jinalangu ni Nancy Okwari.
And now, welcome to the third edition of the Transgenerational Conversation, live from Mama Grace Onyango Cultural Centre here in Kisumu County. And our panel this evening consists of, let me start on the furthest end. Our Gen Z on this particular platform is Benjamin Ndeetim. He is the president's students' organisation of Masenum, also the organising secretary Kenya University President's Council, a pioneer at the Kenya Pharmacy Students Association. He's a final year bachelor of a pharmacy student, Maseno University. Welcome Benjamin and good evening.
Thank you.
Next to Benjamin is Rosaline Onunga. She is the peace building and conflict management professional, holds a PhD in peace building and conflict studies, trainer and mentor empowering communities through self-help groups. She is skilled in early warning, response mediation, negotiations, dialogue reconciliation and trauma healing, as well as she has built a strong government partnership to strengthen conflict systems and counter violent extremism. Rosaline, welcome.
Thank you.
And now, a known figure on this particular platform is none other than engineer Philip Okundi, a renowned person in this particular county especially. He is the NCIC Commissioner, a seasoned engineer with over 40 years of experience in policy governance and international projects. A former member of parliament of Rangwe between 2003 and 2007, served as the MD and CEO in key institutions such as the Great Kenya Broadcasting Corporation, the Kenya Ports Authority, as well as the Kenya Bureau of Standards and the Kenya Post and Telecommunication Corporation. He's also the chairman and boardman leader of the CCK Board of Directors, world space international engineer. Good evening and welcome. And then finally, on the panel, we do have Jovian Zwena. She is a human rights defender and social development practitioner, founder and CEO of CareSign, empowering the youth and marginalised groups, an advocate of SDGs, driving grassroots and policy level change. She also promotes agenda equality, peace building and ending femicide. She also uses music and art as well as activism to inspire awareness, healing and justice. Welcome, Jovian.
Thank you.
And of course, those are not the only panelists we do have this evening. On the other side, we also do have county governmental officials that are currently being represented in this particular hall. That's why I want to hand over to our very own, that is Nancy Okwari, to tell us some of the county officials that are here. Nancy? Okay, we'll be telling you them in a few, but I do understand the deputy governor, as well as other county leadership members of the Kisumu County Government are currently in this particular hall. Let's kickstart off this particular discussion. Talk to us on our social media platform. We'll be sampling some of your views as this session continues. I want to start with the very own Zwena. Now Zwena, the first question being, given that this is a precursor to the conversation that will be happening in Kisumu on the 21st as we mark the International Peace Day. Do we have peace in this country?
Currently, we can say it's on a 50, 50, 60 basis because you're finding there's unrest with the youth and there's unrest also with the medical institution, where now we are having the medics also threatening to go on a strike. We are seeing that the teachers are also coming up. We are looking at currently the leading having to be the unemployment of the youths that are currently existing. So I would say no, because we're still also observing the wars that are currently going between the Sondu and Aharo border. So I would say no, we don't have peace in this country.
Let's go to the engineer. Engineer, do we have peace in this country? And more importantly, how can you describe peace in this country?
Peace in this country is very fragile because we at the commission, we are the level of trust between our people is not so good. And this is something that we need to do something about. It goes into everything we do. Confidence in which we confront us as leaders in this country. See that the youth might migrate. And this, this is the group that should need concentration in order to grow a future for everybody.
Are you of the same opinion or a different opinion?
I am of the same opinion. I would say we are calm, but we are not peaceful because there's a lot that needs to be done when we talk about governance and accountability. But these are things that we can still talk about. That is why we have a transgenerational dialogue. We can have conversations around it, but we cannot ignore.
Benjamin, as a youth of this country, do we have peace in this country?
Yeah, now, among the Gen Z, who are the majority population in Kenya? I don't think that there's any peace in the country.
Why do you say so?
Because the Gen Z mostly feel that a lot of grievances are not sought by the government. You know, the Gen Z want a lot from the government. It's just that we know that when we don't, when we use peace against, when we use peace to give our grievances to the government, we don't usually get a good response. So that's why the Gen Z usually resort to unpeaceful methods or rather violence, so that the government gets to hear their grievances. Because you know, we want economic empowerment that actually creates jobs, economic transformation. You know, mostly, the government is usually saying daily that they are on a path of doing some economic transformation. But then, if you're doing economic transformation and the Gen Z don't have jobs, they are idle. When you look at the social media platforms like Instagram, TikTok, Facebook, you will see that the Gen Z are still not at peace. Thank you.
Zwena, as a human rights defender, you've just heard what Benjamin is talking, some of the grievances that we saw emanating last year to this year when the Gen Z took to the streets. In terms of the other underlying issues, aside from Benjamin has pointed out unemployment, what are these other underlying issues that has taken the country where we are right now?
Well, what I can say is the people holding space or the officers are not listening. It's time that we stop just using the fear tactic to try silence the youth and especially the Gen Z. It's time to have such conversations with the youth so that we can understand where exactly did the bug start dropping on us. You're looking at the situation where someone is a graduate with a masters and is a border border rider, someone who's able to hold an office and actually work, but because of no opportunities, lack of those opportunities because of favourism, and I'm still shocked in 2025, we still have the godfather syndrome that was there for you to actually get opportunities in offices. If this can be taken away and we create jobs, and I want to say this, but I hope I won't be stoned. Yes, creating houses is creating jobs for the youth. But how do you get a masters person to go make cement for you, yet they do not even have the basic right to even get a job, walk into an office? We've not capacity build them so that they can be able to speak for themselves and say, this is my skill, this is what I have and this is what I can offer. You get that our youth is going, someone who's around 22, 23, going for, to seek a job opportunity. You're being told you need 10 years to 15 years' experience. They were not born then, or rather, they were in diapers. How are they going to get that experience? So if we start giving opportunities on the basis of them having to learn, creating solutions not as per what we found, because what we found was already existing, but creating a new foundation of what employment spaces are supposed to look like and give that space to the youth, I think we'll have a different conversation. But as I said, continuous dialogue and continuous different faces is going to help us get there.
Engineer, in terms of involving the youth especially, not only the kind of the NCIC mission natives that you're carrying across the country, do you involve the youths?
Well, I think this is a very big subject because the youth of this country constitutes more than 70% of our population. And the growing levels of unemployment, levels of incomes are going down and not so much. So as a result, it is important to face the youth and how they'll be comfortable amongst us over the years to come. Additionally, everybody starts at the lowest level. We are children, we become middle, then we, we are youth, then we become a middle people, then we go to old people. All those groups are important in the process of creating peace and creating inclusivity, creating happiness for everybody else so that the economy is actually impacted by everybody's participation. Arrangement, conversation. Every street has a chance to converse with another one so that the problem solution process. You know, when we had the Gen Zs in this country, when the protest was there, it was widespread. The Gen Zs said that they are not listened to. So much is not there, the jobs are not there. There are almost everything less, every less, leaderless. It is very good that it caused everybody to think. And I think this process is a very big one. It's so big that there's nobody which should be left out of this. It's not dialogue, it is a conversation. And every part is looked at in which way shall this part connect with this other one such that all of us together can lift Kenya ahead.
Rosaline, in terms of the other issues that have been raised here by our very own Benjamin is talking that were witnessed last year and this year. In terms of addressing this, what should be the approach, especially from the government?
I think we are talking accountability. We are talking governance and we are talking about, as you can see, decency, decency in our political activities, you know? And this is what Gen Zs are telling us, you know? Normally, when we do our peace building work, we say with women, we are talking women and youth. But then, how come the Gen Zs are still feeling left out? Meaning, whatever we are discussing in the conversations that we are having are not addressing the exact issues that they have. And so, the Gen Zs decided to bring themselves to the table because we normally say, come and let us reason together. But if you're not called, you bring yourself to the table. So that is exactly what they have done. And what we are saying right now, we need to listen to them. We need to have that conversation. We need to put ourselves in their shoes and try to understand them. Because until we address the unemployment issues, we are not going to solve any issues. At least, the duty bearers should try and get jobs for the Gen Zs. They just have to. And then, the Gen Zs are talking about lack of trust, you know? There are political utterances that we receive each and every day, promises that are given that are not kept. And so, these people are saying these promises, if you tell us that is what we not taking any to the political everybody. When we are dealing with them, and more so, the most important thing is to have conversations with them to understand them.
And of course, talking about that Benjamin quickly, before I toss it to the NCIC chairman on the floor and other partners who are here. In terms of addressing that trust issue, in your view, where should the government start to bridge that trust?
And now, before I answer that question, I'd like to maybe give a comment that I think the direction that is being taken is a good one when we embrace dialogue over confrontation. Now, the government can come in by making sure that the Gen Z or rather the youth are included in policymaking. Because mostly during, during the campaigns, and Mr Deputy Governor here can tell you, during the campaigns, it's the, it's the youth and the Gen Z that usually help you in mobilising and getting people so that you can talk to them. But then now, after you get into the seats of the office, you forget about them in policymaking. We have a lot of grievances because even today, coming from the university, the lecturers are on strike. And you know, students have paid fee, they are in school. The parents are giving them money for upkeep, but then they are not being taught. This means that the semester dates will be changed. And this is so costly to the Gen Z. So I think in policymaking, before the government makes any policies, they should be including the youth or rather the Gen Z so that what happened in Nepal or what happened in Kenya does not repeat again. Thank you.
There you have it. I want to now rope in our panelists who are on this particular other side. Our very own Rose Ware is on that particular side. Rose, if you can also get the voice of the chairman himself in terms of cultural values and how it can be salvaged so that it does not undermine the national cohesion of this country. Get the voice on the chairman on that. Thank you, Abdi. We have NCIC chairman Reverend Dr Samuel Kobia, Karibu Chairman.
Asante sana. I really want to say how very pleased we are as NCIC to have provided this platform tonight. And really thanking KBC for making sure that what is talked about here does not just stay in this room, but the whole of the, of the nation here is, here assist. Secondly, we are very pleased that the Gen Z and the millennials have embraced this idea of transgenerational conversations. And which means that then there is already a trust building process. And for us, this is very welcome because this is how we get to understand each other. Secondly, and coming from the Gen Z panelists, being concerned about policymaking process that excludes the Gen Z. What we wanted to assure the Gen Z is that the policymaking process starts like now. What you say here today will go, will be translated into policy. And therefore, you have already contributed to that process. Now, what is even more important is that following these transgenerational conversations, we will then check with those who have participated, like the Gen Z and the millennials, and they say, is this what we hand before we translate it into a policy? So that's very, very important. And it's good that it has been raised here because it will then take it up as we move on.
Okay, Chairman. And apologies for that. We want to take it over now to Nancy Okwari to just tell us more what is being installed there. Also, we'll be getting the views of our very audience who are tuning, who are here and you're tuning in. Talk to us on our social media platforms at KBC Channel One using the hashtag AmaniKwaGround. Nancy Okwari, if you're ready, over to you.
This is eating from the sense of reality. Don't use the despuisant people. This is not child's agenda strikes. This is child's agenda for action. Child's agenda is justice. Child's agenda is public governance. This is the Nini. This is the Wee Wee. This is the Zizi. Let's act now for peace in Kenya.
Welcome back and thank you for staying with us. This is the third edition of the Transgenerational Conversation, live from Kisumu County. We had talked about a lot of issues. If you're just joining us, our dear viewers from wherever you're, you're joining us from, talk to us on our social media platforms at KBC Channel One using the hashtag AmaniKwaGround. Now, I want to continue with this particular discussion with our panelists before we head over to our members of the audience, before they can pose their questions to our panelists here and any other county official and the national government officials who are here with us. Let me go back to Zwena. Zwena, before we went on a short commercial break, we were talking about the issue of rebuilding trust. And Benjamin had tapped a little bit on when it comes to trust between the government and the youth of this country. There is another element to it. What about the trust between the youth and the police officers?
That's now a very sensitive chapter, but it's something that we, we are going to have to talk about because that's one of the biggest elephant we are having in the room. In the recent time, we are seeing how there's been a lot of police brutality against the youths and actually those who are holding spaces, like the activists and human rights defenders. We've seen police abuse their power. We've seen police take away the power of the people, from the people. And according to the constitution, we are free to assemble and also to echo our voices. Freedom of speech is so much enshrined within the constitution and even freedom of assembly. But you find that even when we were having the Gen Z demonstrations happening, we saw a lot when there was a ceasefire that was requested. The police went against their, against their own mindset and led into shooting live bullets and even injuring some of the protesters who were there. I'm not saying all of them are bad because we saw the law taking its course, as much as it takes longer. But we are looking at how are we going to let the youth gain the trust again with the police? And that's where now, we came together as stakeholders of Kisumu County with NCIC, where we had a day on Valentine's Day, where we took flowers to the policeman because they are also human beings, they are also facing their own traumas and also their own dramas. So we went to create, not even just create, but to show the people of Kisumu County that the police are still our brothers and sisters. As much as this negativity is still trying to be, is still trying to be portrayed by others who are abusing their uniform, we are looking at how can we create that peaceful integration of even youth wanting to be, wanting to enroll into police academy? Because now, after that incident of the Gen Z process, we found a lot of Gen Z refusing now to even go for recruitment. We found only one region was even going higher, but when you came to Nyansay, it was low. Because you're looking at, if they cannot be held accountable, yet they have a tool, a weapon, are we really safe? Are our youths really safe? And not only youths, we even saw the women who are being attacked in Nyalandau. We saw Tiagas being lobbed in homes. Is that really what they're being trained for? And that's why a lot of stakeholders that we are currently having conversations on how to take a VICA, that is Value Clarification and Attitude Change Training, into, into, how do you call it, Gimbaro or rather, the training institution, NIS, so that we can start having this peaceful conversation with the police so that when they're now integrating into the community, they're able to serve the people as a people. And when they face challenges, they're able to get also support.
And engineer, in terms of the approach, because you're dealing with not only an informed generation, but also a take serving generation. So in terms of approach, do you continue with the same approach that has been used before? Or you need to change your tact?
Well, thank you. We in the NCIC, we exist to promote and facilitate equal opportunities, good relations, harmony and peaceful coexistence amongst persons of different ethnic or racial grounds and create people feel inclusive in whatever happens for their good and amongst them. But we know in this country, the police, for example, their logo is to say, Wutumishi Wa Wati. But this has not been demonstrated in what we have seen in the recent past. So otherwise, this has brought, the way they have operated has brought mistrust. The level of growth of mistrust between this entity and Wanainchi has gone very big. And this, we have a job to ensure that And this, we have a job to ensure that we put people into training, put the police people in training. We also talk amongst our various generations to see how to approach one another in order that we can create harmonious coexistence amongst ourselves so that more things can happen for the good of all. But we're handling a whole number of issues, even hate speech alone. People talking in languages that can cause others to harm the others is something we have to find how to detect and we are detecting some, some are very difficult to detect. But they all come up towards causing this G N Z reaction. Because if they are harmed, they do not see things coming forward, then obviously somebody must do something about it in order that governance can take place in this country in a good way.
Okay. And Rosaline, before, and Benjamin, before we move to the audience, let me ask you, in terms of listening to the concerns that have been raised not only by Benjamin and many other youths who are out there in the country, is the older generation listening to them?
Yeah, the older generation are listening to them, but they are not acting. So, so that's why the G N Z's are out and telling us, can you please listen and take action? So, so like I mentioned earlier, we have been talking inclusion, we have been talking twenty-two fifty, you know, thirteen twenty-five, the women and involving also the youth in, in, in our work. And you know, in, in our peace building work, there is no way you will work without the security sector. And, and, and just going back a bit to the question that you asked, Zuen and, and the commissioner, you know, we have to work together. First and foremost, we are all Kenyans, be you a G N Z, the older generation, or even the police, we are all Kenyans and we have to work together, you know? So, so the G N Z's are out here telling us what they need. We have to listen. We have been listening, but we have not been listening enough. So what I'm saying is this is the opportunity. The N C I C has taken the lead. Us as partners, we are also following up. So we have to work together. The organizations, the civil society organizations, the religious organizations, every Kenyan has to come out so that we address this issue because this issue is for all of us. It's not for N C I C alone. It's for government, it's for the political class. So all of us together as Kenyans must come out and address this issue. We have to listen to our G N Z's. We have to tell them what we can do and what we cannot do because we may not be able to do everything that they want us to, to carry out within that short period of time. But we have to be very honest with them and tell them exactly what can happen and what cannot happen.
In terms of rebuilding not only the trust, Benjamin, what do you think should be the first step in ensuring that your concerns are heard? Sorry? I'm asking, aside from hearing your concerns, what do you think, not only the government and the key stakeholders, what do they need to do so that they can ensure your concerns are heard?
Okay. Now, before I answer that, I heard you talk about police and I'd say something about it. You know, the police, I can say that most people in the young, the young generation, the G N Z's and the millennials, we are not so much encouraged even to recruit into the force because there is a culture that has been created in that people now just assume that the corruption that is there in the police force is a, is a normal thing. And those are some of the things that the young generation want the government and agencies such as I P O R to do their job and make sure that most of the sectors are transformed. You know, we can always have conversations day in, day out, but without action, as she said. She said that the older generation listen, but they don't listen enough. So we want the older generation to listen enough so that, you know, we, we, we also want to have a peaceful country and we want to have a country that is moving forward because it's not only the G N Z that should be asking for changes in the country, it should be everyone. When we see that things are not moving well, every, each and every generation should be coming out, of course, with a G N Z leading. Now, I don't want us to...
I can toss it to the audience?
Okay.
Thirty seconds?
No. I don't want us to just always have conversations like this, but then I want that the actions should be taken by the relevant authorities and the government and the agencies that are also independent. Thank you.
So implementation after this particular discussion. Now, let's open it up for members of the audience who are currently joining us. I want to hand you over to my very able colleague, that is Nancy Okwari. Nancy, over to you.
Asante sana Abdi Aziz Hashim. Jukumulangu nikuapa tu Wanainchi, nafasi akuliza maswali na nikukujuzatuu nazo ukazungumza kwaluga ya kingeriza au kiswahili. Napia swali lakwa liwe moja, na fupintanza upande hukisha. Nitaleke upande hukutasimama tafadali, utueleze jinalako swali lakwa nilipi unalelekeza kwanani.
Okay. Allow me to address in English, kiswahili kidogo. So my name is Fulgens Richard Rabach, the CEO and founder of T V S T G. My question, as I'm starting the Bill of Rights in the Constitution, Article fifty-five, states that obliges the state to take measures including affirmative action programs to ensure that the youth access, mark the word access, relevant education, training, have opportunities to associate, mark the word associate again, and represent and be represented, participate in political, social, economic and other spheres of the country benefits. Now, Engineer and Madame, sorry, in G N Z language, we'll call you Auntie Amado. So you have said that we, the question is, who is we? We, you tell us to, to form policies, you tell us to take actions that you, at the end of the day, you all people approve. How many times, Madame, how many times do you want to listen to G N Z's? How many times do you want people to die for you to listen? Have you not seen people go with cards on the road? How far can you listen or how deaf are you in the government?
Asante kwa hilo swali, utasimama tafadali, utueleze jina swali lakwa kifupi na unalelekeza kwanani.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Polo. I come from Yakach Sondu. My question will be directed to the panel. What is N C I C and the government doing to ensure that there's lasting peace in areas prone to border conflict like Sondu where I come from? And then how are they involving youth in ensuring that this peace that they are campaigning for is continued through generations? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your question. Muishe upande hukisha nitaleke upande hukutupate maswali matano hivi utasimama tafadali jinalako na utueleze swali lakwa nilipi.
Okay, thank you. My name is Richard Omundi. My, I work with Lead Initiative. My question would be, in the forty-seven counties in Kenya, I think the youth policy has been only implemented by around five counties, including Kakamega, Neri and Makwe. So that youth policy itself, you, you realize it was made without even the involvement by the youth. So my request, because it opens the grievances that we have as youths, my, my, my request would be, or my question would be, what are our counties doing about the youth policy itself? Again, the grievances that we have as youths is that we are excluded and the exclusion part of it makes us to look for an option. So an option might be a violent means of airing our, our, our problems. So I think with the good policies that we have, it is time that the government should now come in to implement them, holistic, to implement them so that we can find a way of not just being a beneficiary of peace, but being part of the implementers. For example...
Thank you. Asante. Tubelipata hilo swali. Asante kwa mdawako. Mtnirusu nielleke upande hukutasimama, tueleze jinalako swali lakwa nilipi kwa kifupi sana.
Okay. My name is Clarence Orlando. I'm a lawyer by profession. My question is to the panel. Now that the G N Z movement has been largely leaderless, is there a fear that once they manage to get what they want, then they open up the field for some people to take advantage? People who are not probably having good intentions to take advantage once the space is open? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your question. Briefly, then I will head to, to get a question from that and you can just stand up. I'll be getting more questions later on. So your name and your question.
Okay. My name is Dai Jojo and my question goes to the panelist. As we are bridging this gap, yes, and having these conversations, peace starts with freedom of expression and art is a freedom of expression. How then can we have this conversation beyond this space when our online spaces are being filtered, we are being scrutinized and our art of expression inakuwa compromised? How can we have this conversation and come up with a solution? And for the fact that the boomers and the millennials have always labeled as G N Z's as rebels, how can we munatakaje? How can we have this conversation? Yes, thank you.
Na swali ni munatakaje. Mtnirusu nipite tu kidogo angala unipate manaki ni mazungumzo ya vizazi, nimepata upande wa vijana, wacha tu upate swali lakwa tafadali utasimama, tueleze jinalako swali lakwa kwa kifupi.
My name is Jacob Otina Akachi. I represent Law Council of Elders. I don't have any question, but I have a comment. I was touched in two thousand and twenty-four when the G N Z's rioted. It was their right, yes. But what I'm seeing, the government is failing the youth. Youth have energy, but what it is, it is because of deep corruption. Where on earth should youth fail to get employment? I'm telling this government that if this youth are not controlled, this social rupture will be, will be the mainstay of this country. What it is, we as leaders, the Council of Elders, we endorse that this corruption should go. It should be dead. Otherwise, youths, they have the energy, this country will sink. As at now, unemployment, almost three weeks ago, there was a fundraising. About ten thousand youths were looking for fifty ceilings. People knife themselves. What is it? This country is sixty, over sixty years in, in terms of independence. Where are we going? This nation is going to sink. Thank you.
Asante sana. Wanasema mambo mengi. Mdam chache lakini tumemaliza awami ya kwanze ya maswali nigependa kuredia kwa ke Abdi Aziz Hashim. Angala utupate majibu kisha intakuwa nachikuwa maswali zaidi. Abdi.
Indeed, Nancy, the question there, of course, that has made us jiggle a little bit, munatakaje, what do you want from us? Let me start with here, Zuen. Zuen, you've heard that particular question, especially when it comes to the border conflict. As a human rights defender, we start with that question and then follow up with the others that have been asked.
Thank you so much and thank you for the questions. And just as my beloved sister said, the border conflict is really interfering with the population that is there within Sondu. We are seeing, yeah, businesses are being closed early, they're not operating as they are supposed to do. We are finding kids having to be taken to school or escorted or schools being closed down. So which means their lives are not going on as, as it's supposed to be. And I'm happy that with N C I C, there's conversations currently ongoing on how we can do ground awareness and even find how we can, we can basically re, re, remove or reevaluate other people to these other places in Kisumu. But what is most important is the leadership, the leadership of Sondu and the other bordering, where the conflict is coming from. We need to have conversations where we understand where is this border and who is in charge of what and what? Because we are finding now the people are taking it upon themselves now to safeguard their communities and that is their right. When you look at what social power speaks about, it speaks about the communities. The communities are the ones who have the power to control and even influence what goes on. And if this goes ahead, then which means we are going to have a question, where is Sondu a county on its own or a country by itself? Because we need to have real conversation, intentional conversation, where we look at how are we going to equip the police force that are there, the chief in that area and even the community elders, and how are we going to engage the youths, especially the youths who are now being influenced into these battles? And look at what can we put, a resource that can have not only information, but also have access to the different kind of amenities that are there. Currently, as you're speaking, the G B B desk is not active, literally not active. If any woman is attacked, there's nowhere to report to. You find most of the cases are being referred all the way to Kisumu or Ahero, then Ahero refers to Kisumu because they are not able to handle it. But that's another conversation for another side.
One other day. Engineer, as you respond to all the questions that have been posed to you, more importantly, the young G N Z there talked about an article of the institution, the constitution itself. In terms of listening, they're saying you're talking and talking and talking. Are you deaf?
Yes, I get you. I think I, I will start with the questions around Article forty-five of the constitution. You know, we in the N C I C, we advocate for one people, one nation and one destiny. This means that we need to find out what can make us become more adequately provided as one people, one nation and one destiny. We do research in all the sectors. In fact, currently, we are talking with parastetons to see how they employ people who are there. Because in employment is where you can estimate the distribution of the public resources that people are paying taxes for so that they gain the goodness of their country. And here is where the people find that we don't have jobs, we don't have this, you know? Now, how are they doing this? Now, we create a conversation with us, with these people so that they see that the balances are there, the, the gender balances are there. It's very difficult because the history we are coming from is very complicated whereby you find almost over sixty percent of one ethnic group is in one place and yet they're sharing public resources. And so we are creating this situation where everybody has an equal opportunity to be considered. People's diversity is recognized and given a chance to grow. So that is a tall order. We are working on it and we are creating a conversation. That's why we need this kind of audience like we have here because out of it, we take what has been discussed and what the feelings of our people are so that we can take it up to other policymakers in order that people have a chance to, to really grow into this thing. We cannot achieve it with violence. Violence is a reaction which you go to because you have nowhere to go. Ukifunga paka ndani ata pita, ata, ata pita rakuadrisa, ata through your eyes to go somewhere else. But we don't need this to happen. The other thing, though...
Finally, Engineer?
Sorry?
Finally?
Why?
Finally, finally.
Finally.
Questions that I can pose to others.
Finally, freedom of expression and also corruption. Corruption is, is the biggest elephant in the room we go to in this country. It has grown and it's taken a very, very serious stage. Let us all have a live conversation to try and reduce and make it a minimum and let it go altogether because it is behind everything we do, everything we do. And if we let it go up, it will make things worse. I think I can end there, but corruption is something that nobody can hide today because even as we said at the top policy level that Kenya is losing around two billion shillings a day, if that happens, then there's no need to pay tax. You pay tax and it goes to corruption.
Okay. Rosaline, I know you're itching to respond, but start with that particular question. Simply put, munatakaje sasa.
Tunatakaje, tunataka kuwalewa. We want to understand you. That is what we want. And okay, let me, let me, let me talk, give me the chance also. And okay, let me, let me, let me talk, give me the chance also. You see, everybody has a part to play, just like the body parts. The leg cannot play the part of the hand, yeah? We, I come from civil society. NCIC is government. So what are we doing here? We are trying to work together, we are trying to collaborate. Because there are some things that NCIC cannot do as government, that I can do, that my organization can do as civil society. And when civil society, most of the time, is closer to the community. So when I get information from the community, I am able to relay it to the government through NCIC and other government organs. So that even if you want to be involved in policymaking, you cannot just stand up on the streets and say, we want to be involved in, in, in policymaking. There has to be a structure and that is where we come in. So like right now, we are having these conversations. NCIC will go back to Nairobi, they have their regional office here. We, we are normally together even whether the Nairobi office is here or not. And these are some of the issues that we are talking about. But we cannot, because you, you are also telling us that we sit and talk and leave you out. Now we have brought you in. Why don't we start from here? We have a past, we have a present and we have a future. So this is a starting point. Why don't we start from here? We want to listen to you. And you know, if you have a child, whether they are protesting or whatever they do, they will still come back to their house and eat and life has to go on. But we have to coexist, so we have to listen to you.
And quickly, before I go to the crowd, let me just get a few thoughts from Benjamin there. Benjamin, quickly so that I can toss to your fellow Gen Zs to ask more questions. On the corruption that has been talked about, especially I want you to react to the youth policy. In terms of you, the leaders of this, of this county, as young leaders of tomorrow, what have you done in bridging between you and the county government in implementing the youth policy?
Okay, there are a lot of things that have been done between the leaders and the youth in Kisumu County. First of all, I'd like to mention to the Gen Z in the crowd that we have aspirants in the forthcoming elections in Kisumu County. Who are Gen Z? Who are Gen Z? So you know, most of the time we were complaining about representation. You know, we used to say that most of our grievances are not heard because most of the leaders were of the older generation. So now, I think that the Gen Z in Kisumu are taking the mantle and we are going to make sure that we push them and make sure that they get to that position. And again, I think that the county government has also tried to have conversations in institutions such as universities and also in the polytechnics. They usually come and there's also some conversations like Jukuala Usalama and Jukuala Wasomi. So that policies are made from such conversations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And of course, even the by-elections that are coming in November 27th, that is an opportune time for many aspirants to even at least ensure that they have wide for many seats, not only in those particular areas. But Nancy, let's get more views from our audience there.
Namasante Abdiaziz, maswalini mengi, natchikuwa mane upande hu, kisha mane upande hu. Utasimama, tu eleze jinalako, swalilako, taangali upande ule.
My name is Raduk and my question is, what next after this transgenerational talk? Are you just ticking the boxes because the peace day is around the corner? Or because the way things are currently, the country is not at peace. We are just under small control, yeah?
Asante, asante, utasimama, swalilako, kwa kifupi sana, kama alivyo fanya?
My name is Philip Kai and my question is very simple. I've seen you are talking about the youths. Mine is very simple and I want to ask, until when will you keep on postponing what these youths are saying? And if you cannot implement them, when shall you do it? Because the youths are advocating for what is right. And when they are advocating for what is right, why send the police who has been holding guns on their behalf to kill them on the street? If at all, speaking what is right makes a state to kill its citizen? Where are you at?
Asante sana, tu eleke upande hu, kwa kifupi, kisha ntaeleke upande hu. Utasimama, jinalako, naswalilako.
Thank you so much. My name is Ambele Sarafina, I work for Igolwings Organization. I have two questions. And the first is to you, madam. Why are agencies such as NCIC being used as political tools for convenience when it comes to the government engagement? And then we all know that violent ideologies run very fast or rather spread very fast online. But then how is the government going to stop this radicalization without making us feel as if our voices are being stopped online? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tutapata majibu, manaki ni maswalii ambe wa naulizwa, na washikadawa, wana stahili kuyajibu akohapa ye wakiwe mo tume yam NCIC. Utasimama, jinalako, naswalilako, kwa kifupi sana.
Okay, I'll skip my onomatopoeia for the sake of chronometer. So I'll go straight to the, to my question. So I just have two questions. The first question goes, they have talked about creating equal opportunity even for the youths. But it is the same country where we have over 85 years being a youth leader and you are just there sitting. Is that okay? Then my second question is, right now. Okay, my second, my question, my second question goes. You've said you've been conducting this transgenerational question, this transgenerational conversation. But with who, with whom, nobody has ever talked to me about this, anything.
Leo tume kufikia, ndio manali ohitko Kisumu sitye, kupata maonie nyu. Tu utasimama, tafadali, jinalako, namchango wako katika mjaada lahu, ntaakshkia.
Thank you. My name is George Alombo. George Alombo is a peace actor and also I chair Western Kenya Human Rights Network. When Benjamin talks, and I know the situation we normally go through as seeing the young people. Benjamin, how is it easy for you even to get an attachment? Because it is a recipe for violence. Because once you're denied, soon you'll be graduating. And you don't expect, as a pharmacologist, I find you by the roadside? So I'm concerned about that. And part of it will go also to the true arms of government. Is it so difficult or too demanding to even open those offices? We have several departments, both in national government and also county. Even just giving the young people attachment or retention for free, the truth, they always suffer and some turn down.
All right, thank you so much. Asante, utasimama, jinalako, kwa kifupi sana, muda unatupa kisogo.
Okay, my name is Charlotte. I work for an organization called Afrinov, that is Africa Center for Nonviolence and Sustainability Impact. Okay, the young people always say, whenever they air their grievances, they are always being told to follow the right channel. And the reason why they're always being told this is because those people have the remote control over those channels. So can you please dismantle the remote control so that the young people can have their voices heard? Another question, I come from Songo. And we are talking of peace and there is no way you can talk of peace where there is no justice. Where I come from, there are victims of violence as a result of inter-ethnic clashes that have been happening along the border. There are women that are bearing scars of arrows and even pangas. They have even buried their loved ones. Up to now, there is no justice that have been served to these women. I'm asking the commission, when will justice be served to these people?
Thank you so much. Jinalako, naswalini, naleke akutamatisha, kisha tawapad NCIC furse akujibu. Jinalako and your question, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lillian Ogotu from Equity Bank. I would just want to challenge not just the panelists, but the entire country. On what are we telling our youth when they were children? How are they growing up and what are we educating them? Because I think if we raise such a huge number, up to 70% of our, of, of our generation and we are still stuck to the way of the past that you go to school, you get a good job. Reality is, there are no jobs. Can we change the narration that we are bringing up our children with? Can we tell them that being a farmer, being a business person, being something different from just somebody who is employed can make a difference? Let's change our narration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to hand it back to Abdiaziz Hashim so that we can get questions, we can get answers. Then we'll get back to the questions. Abdiaziz.
Okay Nancy, before you go and move from there Nancy, I will kindly ask you to give that microphone to the NCIC chairman. I want to ask him that question that has been posed by a very able Gen Z in the panel. Is the NCIC being used as a political tool?
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to say that the answer is no. NCIC is not being used and cannot be used as a political tool. We are an independent commission. We are not answerable to any, anybody other than the constitution. We are of course appointed by the president, he is our appointing authority. But when it comes to being controlled, we are not controlled by anyone. So that's the, 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 the one answer. Secondly, there has been a question about Songo. NCIC, in the last two years, we have been involved in peace building in Songo. I must really share that originally, this very setting here was supposed to be in Songo. And the two governors of Kisumu and of Kericho, we have been working together and we were looking forward to being, having this conversation in Songo and on Sunday, the International Day of Peace. But there were some technical problems, not coming from the county of Kisumu or county of Kericho, but from other sections of government which were not resolved before today. But we wanted to assure the people of Songo that this is not the end. We will continue and we talked today, in fact, with Governor Professor Nyangnyong, that after this, we'll continue until we see that there is, the issue of Songo is, so, so that there will be a lasting peace as was asked. Then there is, allow me.
Finally, chairman.
Yeah, finally. There was a question as to what, after today, after these conversations, what? I want to say that we will put together all the information, all the questions that have come up, not only today but in other times, so that we'll see this is what we have, we have heard from all the generations. And then we'll form an implementing committee, which then will sort this out and we will put to the right agencies so that we can see what to do together. And we'll work with the government of, of Kisumu, who are hosting us here. So that we'll see at the two levels of government, what is said that we can do at the county level and at the, at the national level. And that partnership is very, very important because there is no one particular agency which can do all the work that needs to be done. But we will continue to work with the government of Kisumu from now going on. And what we wanted to say, I want to ask the Gen Z particularly. You monitor what is going on and hold us accountable. You should have an audit, social audit of what is going on, what we said in Kisumu, what we said in Marisabet, is it being done? So, and that's why it is important to be a little bit more structured so that you'll be able to have a systematic way of following this. I think that's the only way that we will be able to really help each other.
Okay, chairman, okay chairman. Now let me toss it here. Let me start with you, Zuen. You have just heard about one in terms of harnessing, especially this current age of the digital era. How can we use it in that digital space, not only to undermine other people, not to undermine other people, but to use it as a business venture?
So I'm going to look at this in two aspects. The first one, we're going to look at how has technology enabled us to even get justice for the victims who are actually attacked. We've seen Gen Zs and the community, when anything is going wrong, they take pictures and they share it online. And you find that it is easy now to track and even identify perpetrators. So technology has enabled us to get justice, but also technology has enabled for GBV to actually increase. So we also have to look at what are we going to be doing so that we can also have that limitation, where what is able to be shared? I remember when we are having the femicide cases. You would wake up and the first thing in a WhatsApp group you would meet is bodies of young girls maimed. And I think the Communication Authority with the, with the government is currently trying to come up with a policy on what can be shared and at what level. Going back now, I think this one, I'll throw it to my deputy governor. As per what the youth said in regards to the opportunity, there's a conversation where it's being said that the youth using digital space cannot get access to even the, let me now speak in terms of art, that they have to leave Kisumu to go to Nairobi to get that. What if we can equip Kisumu so that all the artists from Nairobi, Mombasa, Uganda, Tanzania come to Kisumu? And I love that Mama Grace Nyango is coming up. So maybe that I will throw back to him and he'll be able to answer the youth in terms of activism and even music and other arts to pay.
I will accord you the rest, one minute each kindly because of time. Let me start with you, Engineer. There's another question, the chairman even did not address it, but you can address it given that you're an NCIC commissioner. Are you using this exercise to tick the box ahead of the polls? And who did you talk to in terms of this transgenerational conversation? You can see a gentleman asking, how did it come to be that we have this conversation now? In a minute.
Is that to me or to her? Okay, okay, thank you. I just want to visit Songo a little bit. As long ago, so at 1929, the first, one of the first deaths in this country, because people did not agree at borders, happened at Songo. So we in NCIC, we take Songo issue very seriously. As a matter of fact, we managed to get the two governors. There are also other two governors, Momabe and Yenyamira. But we made them sign a peace accord, which will create peace in this place. So you know, that is one thing. Now, another thing I want to say is that we need the Gen Zs also, as we audit the entire country on matters peace, they also should check what the NC, CNC is doing so that we are kept in the race to fight this battle for the good of all of our people.
Rosaline and Benjamin, I'll give you an opportunity. But first, let me go to our very own Rose Ware. Then Rose Ware, over to you. And I'll then, I'll be back with the final remarks of Benjamin and Rosaline. Over to you, Ware.
Thank you, Abdie, thank you, our panelists. Before I go to the Kisumu County Deputy Governor, who is here with us on behalf of the governor and the county government, we have NCIC Vice Chair Person here with us, Honorable Commissioner Dorcas Kedogo, our Director James Wanyande, Deputy Director Charlo Mwengi and our NCIC Regional Officers, who are based at the County Commissioners' Office, Lorena Diambu and Castro Baraza. They are on fourth floor at the County Commissioners' Office. We have the Chief of Staff with the Deputy, with the Deputy Governor, Mr. Alois Aguerre. And the Kisumu County Ministers, Salman Orimba, Beatrice Wadiaga and John Awiti. Now we go to the Deputy Governor, Kisumu County, Dr. Matthew Ochieng Oweli. Doctori, Kisumu has suffered during political unrest recently and most of the times. But now, we have some relative calm in Kisumu. How is the county government taking advantage of this calm to engage the community in Kisumu, especially these young people? Karibu, Doctori.
Thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of the governor of the county of Kisumu, Professor Peter Nyangnyong, who met Reverend Dr. Kobia and team earlier. And of course, thank you for introducing the team that we are with here. Before I answer that question, allow me to make a few remarks. One is to thank Gen Z, Benjamin, you and your team, for standing in the gap for this country and for bringing us back to the table to reason together. And in addition to that, allow me also to thank two illustrious sons of Kenya. His Excellency, the President of the Republic of Kenya, William Samue Ruto and the Right Honourable Raile Amolodenga, who decided that out of your agitation, that they can come together for the sake of our country. Today, we are talking about transgenerational conversation. And so we expected to see there the millennials, baby boomers, the alpha and of course... and of course, Generation X, uh, where I belong. I think an attempt has been made to do that, but we can do better, you know, next time. Uh, you know, the government descended on Kisumu today. I mean, you all know that, um, the CS Interior, the PS and the whole team has been here since morning. And we also take note that, uh, Dr. Kobia, your team is part of, uh, you know, Interior. Now, quickly to the question that you're asking. In Kisumu, we say that if the crocodile comes out of the lake to tell you that the hippo is sick, you better believe them. And so if Kisumu tells you that peace is sweet, that peace is what we need to spur development, then you better believe us. Why? Because since independence, we have been considered and it's been true as the center of agitation and we have never known peace. But now, because of the initiative on NCIC, and you're doing a very good job, we can say that for the last few years, Kisumu is, you know, peaceful. Kisumu is providing the message of peace. Kisumu is developing. You just need to look at the number of, you know, uh, guests that you are having, national government, um, you know, um, um, meetings in this, uh, space. You need to look at the kind of investments, uh, since we made a decision as a team to be peaceful, to know what it means to be peaceful. So ask Kisumu, no, we are yet, we are not yet through? Okay, then I can leave it there. But also to note that we feel like we've not been given sufficient opportunity as a county in this forum to be able to tell the country what it means to be peaceful.
Thank you so much, DG, for your contribution as the county government. Unfortunately, we have run out of time. Benjamin, apologies. Benjamin Additi, that is the president's student organization. Thank you for coming. And of course, Rosaline Onunga, the peace building and conflict management professional. Also, Jovi and Zuen, a human rights defender and social development practitioner. Thank you for your time. And then finally, the engineer in the set, that is Philip Okundi, the NCIC Commissioner. Thank you for your time. Uh, dear viewers, that is the time we had for the Kisumu transgenerational, um, conversation here, the third edition. And of course, you'll have to tune in to which, to know which county will be hosting the fourth edition. But for now, I leave you with the entertainment of this band.